Good afternoon. My name is Trish Carter and it's my absolute honor to serve Cedarfield as a chaplain. I hope that you have been enjoying the many opportunities you have had to view different parts of campus as we renovate our normal space. You maybe are walking a way that's different from a way you usually walk. And I'm wondering if while you're doing that, maybe you're seeing things in a different way. And while you're seeing things in a different way, I wonder what other thoughts are surfacing for you? I wonder what diamonds in the rough you have noticed around campus. And speaking of diamonds, I wanted to share with you a beautiful line from Canadian singer and songwriter Bruce Coburn from a song called "All the Diamonds." He says, "All the diamonds that mean anything to me are conjured up by wind and sunlight and shimmer on the sea." Those are his diamonds. I wonder what your diamonds are. So I encourage you to take this opportunity, embrace it, and see each other and Cedarfield through new eyes.
I think I'm good. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yeah.
You found it! Three more months. We can do this. Thank you for being here. We're gonna start off with good news as we always do. Who has some good news that they'd like to share? Emily? Ms. Pacula?
My son is... Oh. My son...
Hello?
I'm loud. My son is coming for a visit tomorrow and I'm very excited.
I'm excited too.
I'll share. My husband is so full-time in marketing like I am, but he's also a local actor. And his show with Richmond Shakespeare has been getting rave reviews. And so this weekend is closing, so I'll be celebrating with him. I'm very proud. It's a two-person show, so it is a beast for him to memorize all of that. So I'm very proud of him.
Who else has good news? Anybody? Oops, it's whiskey.
I'd like the community to know that Kathy Moran, our social worker, is celebrating her 25th anniversary of servicing Cedarfield. I think that's a special milestone in her professional career.
Absolutely. Any birthdays or anniversaries in the room? Which Sharon Brown has something to announce.
I just celebrated 25 years January 19th.
Herky?
I'm not talking about me, but I'm talking about Lynn Woodward over there. Today is her birthday, but I don't know which one it is.
I heard it was sweet 16.
Good news. Jaleen Williams, a resident of ours up in the healthcare section, is celebrating her 100th birthday on the 27th of this month. And her family is coming to celebrate with her the weekend before the 27th. That's a special, special celebration.
Any other February birthdays in the month? Lauren's birthday is this month? Twenty... What day?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay. Next week, 15th is Lauren's birthday. My birthday is this month too. And I'll... Ooh, I know. That's what I say when I wake up in the morning. Woo, I did it again. So I'll share with you a funny story. A few of you might have passed by my office last week on Friday. Friday was the 2nd of February. And a good friend of mine from Hermitage, Richmond decided that for my birthday, he was going to send me flowers and a big basket of treats on the 2nd of February. Little did he know that my birthday is the 22nd of February. He said he remembered the twos. He just missed one of them. So we'll see what happens on the 22nd. Any other good news before we move on? Okay. I love the Super Bowl. Anybody else love the Super Bowl? Yeah?
Yes.
Am I a big professional football fan? Nope. Is my favorite team playing this year in the Super Bowl? Nope. Actually, my favorite team hasn't played in the Super Bowl since 1996, right Sharon? The reason I love the Super Bowl is simple. Firstly, it means I don't have to spend Sundays in front of a TV waiting for games to end to have conversation with my family members. But secondly, the Super Bowl always signifies to me the end of football season and the beginning of my favorite season of all, baseball season. That's right, eight days until pitchers and catchers report for the New York Yankees, but not that I'm counting. Fifty-five days to the first pitch. As many of you know, each year I'm truly convinced that my beloved New York Yankees will win the World Series. I'm truly convinced that this will happen this year. We've waited a long time. How many of you know that Cedarfield used to have a softball team called the Sluggers? Sharon, were you on the Sluggers? Anybody else in the room on the Sluggers? So each Tuesday and Thursday, back in 2005, we proudly donned our Cedarfield t-shirts and traveled to Moody Middle School on Woodman Road to play our two games a week. The team was made up of nurses, housekeepers, maintenance team members, the director of dining, pharmacy staff, and also a bunch of Cedarfield residents who would ride the bus out to see us play each week. I was the official scorekeeper and also the official snack provider. Pizza was everybody's favorite. We even had a mascot. Do you remember that Sharon? It was a little snowman. I'm not quite sure why, but someone was always responsible to bring those to our softball games. The best part about the Sluggers was not the team itself, but the support we had from the community. There is something about being out with a crowd of people, sitting outside under the bright lights and cheering on a group of friends that always has made me happy. Maybe that's how those Buffalo Bills and Minnesota Vikings fans feel in sub-zero temperatures, but that quite frankly isn't enough to make for me. I'm sticking to baseball. By the way, the team stayed together for two full seasons. Our record was 1 and 23. The one game we won was a forfeit. And the team we were playing came by to tell us that they decided to go to the movies instead of play with us that game. But that one game, you would have thought we won the World Series or the Super Bowl because that was our one victory in two years. So there's always something to celebrate. We're gonna move on with the agenda. There's gonna be a couple of changes. I'm gonna ask Kate, she's in the first row, to come up and share our mission moment with us. It's a little warm in here. Anybody else warm? I'm gonna turn it down.
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So I have the pleasure of announcing our mission moment for January. So as we all know, our mission statement is enriching life's journey. For the month of January, we would like to recognize an individual in our maintenance department who truly goes above and beyond their job description or duties. Their willingness to take on additional projects and to help with coordination for multiple areas is noticed and appreciated. This individual is so dedicated that they came in on not only their day off, but a holiday to help ensure the completion of a timely project. Our mission moment recognition for the month of January goes to Lori Andrews. We are beyond appreciative of your effort and can't thank you enough. Hi, everyone. I was just saying to Maria that I am... While I have a degree in acting, I am not a good liar. And so it took a lot out of me to just be like, Lori, you should just come to town hall. It's town hall, Lori, just come! Anyways. So I am going... We've got one new resident who moved in in the month of January that I just wanted to send a special shout-out to, and that's Helen Horwitz. She has moved into the fourth floor on the D Wing. And I'd be remiss if I did not also thank Beth Long. I don't know if you're watching, but Beth Long, who connected us with Helen and really encouraged her to come and take a look at Cedarfield as her future home. And Helen was absolutely excited the entire process. I mean, even the things that really are not all that enjoyable about the move-in process. She had just been so excited from the start to finish. And so we are so thrilled that she's officially a resident here. So please, if you see her in the hall, please, please, please welcome her, you know, and help her navigate the community itself. I also wanted to take a moment to introduce you all to Maria Edwards, who is in the back of the room there. So Maria is our new marketing coordinator. You may... Yeah! So I think you'll appreciate this, that when I asked Maria if there was anything specific that, you know, she wanted me to share with you all, she said she loves to garden, she loves to read, and my favorite part, she loves to work hard. That's right? That's the correct answer, right? And Maria has been working hard. So she's been with us for, I think, a week and a half, two weeks now. And she is absolutely amazing. She takes one lesson to learn something new in the department, and she just runs with it. And so she has been already an incredible asset to our community and, of course, to our department. And so I just wanted you all to have a face to her name, because you'll hear me talking all kinds of things about her all the time. So I just wanted you to meet her. Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I was just gonna say that this is new for all of us. So I feel like I'm on Get Smart. I'm getting remote messages on my watch from our watch party that as of five minutes ago had five people watching, and they said, "Bring Maria on up so that we can see her."
You may recognize her. She was in our... On the healthcare side of the building for a year?
Almost.
Almost a year. And then she transitioned over to our marketing department. So please help me welcome Maria Edwards to the marketing team. So updates on occupancy. This is just real quick, as we were talking about new residents who have moved in. Just so you're all aware, we are on track to have three residents move in this month of February, eight residents moving in in the month of March, and currently we have 15 people who are in process. So they have not cleared the application process yet, but we're hoping to have 15 new residents in the month of April. So very exciting things coming from the marketing department. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, that was my husband calling and asking me how my day was, so it's not my Get Smart moment. But Leah's up next.
Hello, everyone. I asked to skip ahead a little bit so I could get back and prepare a report, but I wanted to share with you some great news on our COVID statistics. We have no COVID cases in healthcare at all, so that's why we're all mask-free. So we take those small victories. I also wanted to take this time to just say thank you, to review a little resident satisfaction, your feedback that we've received. We really appreciate it. The things that you share, we welcome as, you know, learning opportunities or just an opportunity to say thank you for allowing us to provide care for you or for your family. So definitely appreciate that, and please keep it coming. I'm located where Maria used to be. You're welcome, Emily. Right outside the entrance to healthcare in that admin suite. So please stop by and see me. There's rows and rows of cards for myself, for Lauren, for Brittany. If there's any feedback that you want to share, we do want to hear it. As far as infection control, we had a really fun time setting up what I call a dirty room so that our team could understand what to look for when they're in this healthcare environment, like oxygen tubing and things like that. They had a really good time with it. There's small things that you wouldn't think are a big deal in healthcare, like when you're changing your bed and you just kind of throw the sheets on the floor as you're moving around. Yeah, that's an infection control issue in this setting, so... Or, you know, folding the towel and putting it under your neck and things like that, you know? So we went through those steps with the team, just ongoing education. And then we also created from feedback about the weekend nursing team and how, you know, they seem like, well, maybe they didn't get the memo. We created a communications book to make sure that we're sharing that weekday information with the weekend team. Myself, our clinical leaders, we call, hey, how's the day going? Is there anything that you need? So we think that that's really bringing the team together. And again, we're listening. So as you see things or you hear things or you have an idea about something, please, please, please bring it to us so we can do what we can to make it happen. And that's all I wanted to share. Do you have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
I think we've been hearing for months about the certification. Has that come to fruition or is it still waiting?
Still waiting. Remember the old TV screen with the red and blue and green that says standby? That's kind of where we are, for lack of a better way, our answer. But maybe the team here might know more, but we're still in wait mode. And we are checking. In our area meeting, we had a resident ask us, should we start calling our senator or, you know, who do we need to call? So I really, really, really appreciate that support, but I've been reassured that the team at Pinnacle Living, they are checking, you know, our home office in Brook, I should say. We're checking. So we are conducting ourselves as though we have that number. So that's why we do the education, like the infection control and things like that. Tell me your name.
Me? Mel Cerny.
Hi, Mr. Cerny.
How are you?
Great. If you don't have anything for me, then I'll move along. All right. Thank you. Brittany? Oh, Lauren!
Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry, I'm a little taller, so hopefully you can hear me okay. I'm here today to actually share some future opportunities and how we will be expanding engagement in the memory care household, which is called Morning Glory. So we have received feedback from family members in Morning Glory about what they want to see moving forward in the household, and we're, you know, very happy to work alongside them to make it a reality for the residents who live there. So there is an area that was previously used as office spaces that will be repurposed into areas the residents can use. So we're, you know, looking at potentially knocking down some walls, for example, to make it more open, more visible for the people that live there. And some of the feedback that we had gotten from the families are adding things like exercise equipment, game rooms, a library, things along those lines, once we can actually change the physical space a little bit. You know, so we're certainly excited for this change and looking, you know, toward the future for this household. Are there any questions about that? Okay. I'll be around afterwards.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
No.
No? Okay. How about now? How about now? Better? Okay. I won't be here before you long. I just wanted to come up and say...
Who are you?
I'm sorry. My name is Brittany Ingram-Atkins. I'm the healthcare administrator. We are in healthcare gearing up for our mock survey. So we had our certification survey last year to get us through the Medicare certification process that was deficiency-free, and we actually partnered with a consulting group who was gonna come in in April. Those dates are April 8th and 9th, to do a mock survey of our healthcare center. So that mock survey is gonna be... Is function as though we were having a real survey to do a check-in and a check-up to see how we're doing in healthcare. So that's what we're gearing towards in healthcare, and we're very excited to be mask-free, to continue to do group activities, to continue to be out and about in the communities and have those programming and things going on on the households that we're all used to seeing. Any questions? Anything that I can answer right now? Okay. I'll be around afterwards as well.
If you are following along on our agenda, it says Facilities Management, Steve Nelson. Many of you met Steve in the last meeting and probably have spent some time with him over the last several weeks. Steve is our interim Director of Facilities and Maintenance. He is the Facilities and Maintenance Director at our sister community, Windsor Mead. Unfortunately, he had a meeting there today and said that he tried to be back on time, but given the fact that he's not here, my guess is that he's not gonna make it. So I'll move forward and talk a little bit about the things on the agenda that he was gonna report on. One is our life safety mock survey. So as Brittany talked about getting ready for our survey with the state, part of that includes a life safety inspection, which incorporates fire safety, electrical wiring, temperatures, things of that nature. We have contracted with a consultant who comes in once a year and spends about three days here and leaves no stone unturned. He spent, like I said, three days and gave us a report at the end of his visit with lots of suggestions, but nothing that he was overly concerned about. So we are working diligently with the team in the dining room, because some of those items that he mentioned were in the kitchen, as well as with the maintenance team to make sure that we are prepared for that survey when they come in. And again, he has said that he's seen much improvement in the year since his last visit, which was very encouraging for us. The next thing on the list is the lobby and fellowship hall renovations. I did something that I probably wasn't supposed to do yesterday. After the construction team left, I put on my little yellow construction hat and used my master key just to check progress, and things are looking really good. Our gathering place, the gathering room across from the ATM machine, is making great progress, as well as the fellowship hall itself. The fellowship hall was a little cold. If you look outside in the courtyard, you see wood over the doors. There are no doors there anymore, so it's a little bit colder than it has been in the past. But just being in there without the window treatments is a completely different feeling. It's so large and open, and I think it's gonna be very inviting once the construction process is done and the renovations are done. We did change, for those of you who were at our last meeting, we talked about a piece of paper that would talk a little bit about the phasing of the project that we left in the library. We did change, many of you might have noticed, Phase Two and Phase Four of the... Two and four? One and four? Two and four, yep. Phase Two of the project was supposed to start on February 15th, and what that was supposed to entail was the lobby and the library. What we found out about a week and a half ago was that the custom carpet for the lobby just wouldn't be here in time. So what we did was we looked at the schedule and basically saw that really the least impact on residents would be if we switched Phase Two and Phase Four of that project. So we went ahead and made those changes. If you want to see what's entailed in each of those phases, you can go by the library and look, it's on the table there. If there's any questions about that, let me know. The good news for those of you who use the library is that we will not be taking it offline on February 15th, which was the original plan. So a lot of library and puzzle people are really happy about that. The next thing I want to talk about briefly is our D-Wing generator. We continue to make progress with that. For those of you who drive or park on that side of the building, you might notice that we've made great progress with pouring foundation and getting ready for the installation. As that process goes along, we will also include the installation of the charging station, which we'll be able to put online hopefully at the beginning of June for any residents or guests that have electric cars that need a charging station. Any questions about any of those? Okay, let's start with Mr. Cerny.
When the construction is completed, it looks like the base has been poured and the battery and generator will go in. There were... There are 12 to 14 spaces there that have been taken up by the trucks. And we in C-Wing and D-Wing also are finding it very difficult, as we've pointed out in the past, to find parking. Has there... Have you looked at any way to reserve parking for these people that live in that area?
So one of the things that we spoke about back a few months ago when Lacy was here was the ability to use the Gary property, which is the property that's right next to us that we purchased probably about 10 years ago, to park cars of workmen and then basically have someone go there and pick them up and bring them back. It sounds like they're not doing that. So I will talk with Steve when he gets back tomorrow and make sure that he reiterates that that's what we really need to have happen. Ms. Williams?
I think perhaps they are parking over at Gary, but they've got about 12 spaces blocked off for all the different construction equipment that comes and goes, and it's been blocked off for a month.
Okay.
Looks like it's still gonna be blocked off for a month.
Okay. Well, I'll check into that and see how long that those spots will be offline because of the equipment.
Doors in the fellowship hall gonna be replaced?
Yes. Doors and windows will all be replaced. So for those of you who are watching remotely, I guess about a minute ago, someone decided that it would be a good idea to do some landscaping outside of this room. So if you're hearing a hum in the background, that's what it is. Any other questions about any maintenance or engineering issues? Okay? If not, I will ask Neil to come on up.
Hey, good day, everybody. Neil Steyer, Director of Dining, interim... Interim Director of Dining. Can you hear me soon? Hi to all our remote listeners. Hi, Amanda. I'll read your emails soon, I promise. Well, today was a pretty good day. There I was, minding my own business, in a meeting, and I get a text, the health department shows up. So we talked about all these mock surveys and everything else. Why have a mock survey? Let's have a real survey. So for five hours, there I am with a very nice person, Ms. Crawford from the Enrico Health Department, you know, Virginia Department of Health, walked through all seven kitchens, chef Tyrone and I. We were so nice, it was unbelievable. And we have... And we're happy to report, we had zero deficiencies. Great job all the way around and our team, and I got shiny new health permits to put up. Okay, a couple of weeks ago... Or what day, Dr. Elvira?
25th.
The 25th. Thank you, Dr. Elvira. We had a dining retreat. Holy cow! What happened during that retreat? We went around the world. We went around the world. We were talking about dining. This is, what, what is this, Ms. Amy? What, what year is this?
Year of the dragon.
Year of the dragon?
It's the Year of Dining.
It is the Year of Dining.
Thank you. So, we talked about dining. We have wonderful main dining where we have three separate venues in there that we aren't quite treating separately. So, we have Prima, we have the pub, and we have the grill. Well, the goal this year is to make those separate destinations that you can have. So, in the grill, we would have gourmet grill food. In the pub, gourmet pub food. Stuff you know, that you're familiar with, that you like, we'll take requests, we'll take other things too. We met with, with residents within the dining committee, with staff members on, on the twenty-fifth, and we gave a presentation. And we're going to roll that presentation out to you all, that you can come to a meeting and, and see what we're talking about, along with some updates as well. So, Louisa, she was, she marveled because when we're talking destination dining from around the world, well, one of our workers is actually from Kotebar, which is on the coast of Africa. And it used to be a French colony, so she speaks French. So, we had, at the meeting, at the retreat, we had Parisian food, and she was talking all about Paris, all about the food, and of course, I was interpreting. And then, we had, everybody known June, the hostess, she's Chinese. We, we did the same thing there. So, the goal with destination dining is to create these venues and have an experience that you could get culturally or from around the United States, why not bring it here? So, with the help of the dining team, Denise and others, we are going to be focusing on that. And within the destination dining part, let's say in, in Prima, we will have a destination, let's say Paris, Rome, Barcelona, Manila, other areas, New York, San Francisco, New Orleans, I could go on and on. But we can have these locations and we will have these menus for a set period of time. And you can have different pairings. Now, on, remember on New Year's Eve, everybody have fun on there? I got pictures of everybody having fun on New Year's Eve, where we had kind of a set menu. That's how we would do it. We would give you wonderful choices, and it would be different from the pub and the grill, and different from, of course, the café too. But that is the goal, and that's the, the meetings that we're going to have about what is coming up with, what, what is it, Amy?
The Year of Dining.
The Year of Dining. Does anyone have any questions for me?
When will the meetings be?
The meetings are going to be starting very soon. They're going to be designated in the afternoons in the Prima Club Room because we'll do a video or a slideshow presentation on it. All right. Well, thank you all for your time.
It's quiet outside. I just asked Emily to go there and ask them to stop blowing leaves, and it worked, so I'm happy about that. Keep in mind that over the next few days, we will be advertising times for those educational sessions in the Prima Club Room. They'll be at four o'clock, and I want to say it's every day next week. So, don't feel obligated to go on a Monday if you can't go. You can go on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. But more information will be both on the bulletin board as well as advertised on Channel 974. We did work with a group of residents. Twenty-five residents attended that retreat. Some of them are in this room. Thank you for all your help with that. And, and some of them even actually enjoyed it so much, they have volunteered to help us with some education and communication as well. So, more to come on that. Next up is Sharon Brown.
What position did you play on the team?
I was the back catcher. Back catcher taught a lot of stuff they saw. You ain't going to do nothing. Yeah. It was fun. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Well, we about to start our spring/fall service kicking it off for this year. And these extra services can be for the cottage for, for the month of March. And these services that you can get would be for pulling out your refrigerator to get clean behind. We can do oven cleaning. We doing comfort and spread washing. We doing blind washing, and returning the mattress. And also, if you have carpet that needs to be done, because I know the holidays, so also you can call, and call in order to get your carpet to be cleaned. And apply with going out to the cottage resident on February the 29th. And if you have any question, just give a house key and a call. That's all I have to say. Any question? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Florence Brooks, Director of Resident Life and Wellness. I have three updates I want to share with you, a little bit about the upcoming presidential primary election, a little bit about social work, and a little bit about pathways to wellness. So, the election, as you all know, this is a big year in the United States with our presidential election. This will kick off on March the 5th with the first primary. Traditionally, voters vote in the fellowship hall, but as you know, that is under renovation. Last week, we, the week before, we had the election chief who works at our site come, and she signed off on the gathering place being used as the voting site for this election. That's the room that's right across from the ATM. Yes, it's under renovation right now, but that renovation will be completed in time for that primary election. That's the only election that will be held in that space. The remaining elections this year will return to the fellowship hall because the fellowship hall will be, that update will be done in time for those elections. While I'm talking about the election, on a related note, just remember that absentee voting is now open through March the 2nd in person in Henrico County at the Western Government Center on Param Road. And absentee ballots can be mailed now. They must be received no later than February 23rd at 5:00 PM. So, get out and vote. Secondly, social work. We're so delighted, as was shared earlier, that Kathy Moran, Kathy Reich, is celebrating 25 years of service. Her anniversary date is tomorrow. So, we're so grateful for Kathy's presence and for her good work here in the Cedarfield community. We're also delighted that Hala Duncan is serving as an interim social worker. Hala is part-time, Monday through Fridays, from eight to one. Her office is on the right, as you round the corner from Administration, heading towards the clinic. Please stop by and see her or give her a call for any social work needs. A project that Hala is focusing on is she's getting a system in place for independent living residents to be able to register their private duty companions. You'll be hear more, hearing more about that in the weeks to come, once that process is set up and we get the word out for you to come and get more information and to begin that process. We're also delighted to share that as of this month, Affirmation Home Health is going to begin assisting in facilitating our low-vision support group. This group meets monthly on the third Monday from 2:00 to 3:00 PM in the club room. Interested persons, please plan on attending. The next meeting will be February the 19th. They have an occupational therapist who will be facilitating the meeting on the 19th. Finally, Pathways to Wellness, as you know, is Cedarfield's unique approach to wellness. We have 10 domains. This month, our focus is intellectual growth. The quest for knowledge begins with birth and is with us throughout our life's journey. Through the intellectual growth domain, Cedarfield desires to support you in your learning. This month, two items of interest in this area include the Focus Group Lecture on February the 20th, where we welcome Martin Brown, the Chief Diversity Officer and Director of Diversity, Opportunity, and Inclusion for Glenn Youngkin. And on February 26th at 3:00 PM, there will be a lecture on Mark Twain's short story called "A True Story Repeated Word-for-Word As I Heard It." That was one of Twain's early short stories. There'll be ample opportunity for reflection and discussion at this event. Finally, it's interesting, I had made a note of this, and this afternoon, as we were gathering, a resident remarked about this, and that is, one of the wonderful riches of Cedarfield is the enormous talent of our resident population. I want to bring to your attention two items of note this month, and those are two resident art shows that are currently running. Florence Traumator's Art Show is up in the atrium gallery until April the 8th. The atrium gallery is the gallery that extends from the atrium café to the wellness building in the tunnel area. And Joyce Haley's show in the Cedarfield Gallery, which is the gallery up on the fourth floor as you head towards dining. Her show is up until April the 30th. Finally, my office in the, is in the business office across from Administration. If I can assist you in any way, please don't hesitate to stop by. In the spirit of intellectual growth, I'll leave you with these words from Ralph Waldo Emerson. He wrote, "The mind, once stretched by a new idea, never returns to its original dimensions." Thank you so much.
I note that I circulated, I guess about two weeks ago, an announcement related to our new functional pathways, Director of Rehab. Did everybody receive that? I'm, I'm proud to share with everybody that Elizabeth Travis, I call her Beth, I've actually known her since she's been 11 years old, is now going to be our Director of Rehab. She will start in the gym downstairs with the Functional Pathways Team on the 25th of this month. Fun fact, for some of you who have been around as long as I have, Beth, or Elizabeth's mom, used to be our Director of Nursing, Ann Goodman. Anybody remember Ann? Yeah? So, she will be here on the 25th. I think she'll be a wonderful fit for our community, and she is so excited to, to come onboard and work here that she's already stopped by two or three times already. So, I'm excited for her to join us. We Care Connect, again, I will remind you each month that you will be receiving the month before you moved in. So, if you moved in in June, in May, you'll be receiving an email, a call, or a text message from We Care Connect. That is a company that we use to track satisfaction with residents. We also use them to track satisfaction with team members. They have probably about 12 questions that they will ask you to either respond to in writing or over the phone, and we use that information to track satisfaction and make some changes within our community so that we provide you with better services. If you get those calls or those emails, please consider filling those out. I will share, they are not confidential. A lot of people have asked that, but they're not confidential so that if you have a concern that we need to fix or address, we know who to contact about that. Any questions about We Care Connect? Yes, ma'am?
I'm like the ones that call, but We Care Call, they were scammers.
You thought it was We Care Connect, they were scammers?
They had a question.
Okay.
They were personal questions, and I knew nothing about it.
Okay. So, know now that if you get a call, it might say We Care Connect on your caller ID, if you have it. It might not. But We Care Connect is a company that we contract with. So, if they call you, it's a, it's a legitimate call. Capital Projects, thank you to all of the residents and the committees who have been working with our directors to get suggestions for capital projects for the upcoming budgeted year, which will start in June. We are now working pretty diligently to put in place some projects that we were budgeted for this upcoming, this past year, year 2024, and you'll see some of that work going on in the near future. One of the things that we are working on is removing wallpaper and putting bright lights near the atrium on all four floors, as well as the entrance, at the Parkview entrance. We're also in the process of putting together plans to do a facelift for our clubhouse, which many of you probably know that we haven't done anything in there since it opened. And some other projects, bench project is underway. We also are in the process of getting some bids for gutter helmets or gutter guards for the cottages and some other things. So, thank you for your input for the upcoming budget, and know that we're working on the current budget to get some of the capital projects accomplished as well, so that we ensure that we continue to work in that direction of making updates throughout the community. Lastly, I will share, we talked a little bit about the lobby and fellowship hall renovations, that we continue to look for a maintenance director. I appreciate, and I think most of you know by now, that I count on our resident committees to help us in screening applicants for directors positions and other key positions. For instance, the Health Services Committee helped in screening the candidate for the Director of Rehab. We invited a few of our team residents from the Facilities Services Committee to help us screen candidates for our maintenance director. Unfortunately, that didn't end the way we wanted it to, but we will continue to invite residents to have input in those who we select to be a part of our team in the future, and hope that you'd be willing to continue to do that. Any questions for me before we move on to a quick core document review and then the council report? Yes, sir, hold on. Here comes a microphone.
We have some great trips that we take from town to town. And we used to fill a bus up. Now, we sign up for the trips, and you sign up 40 people or 25 people, and you can only take 12. And, you know, I don't know how this works, but the old brown bedding bus out here is ready for healthcare. It ought to be in this building. It needs some nursing service. Are there any plans to, to purchase a bus? I'm not one who advocates spending money. I like to save money here, but I think there is a need to do something so that we can take more people on these trips. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, is there a need? Yes. We do have a proposal in motion to look at an 18-passenger for this next year. That proposal has been in motion before. Nothing has come of it yet, but we're definitely working behind the scenes. The 12-passenger bus is the one, of course, that's been reliable. The 26 just came back from its most recent resuscitation, I guess would be the right word. But we too really would like to see our fleet add, have that addition. I'll say this, you may not be aware of it, but this year, we were so grateful to have quite a few of our vehicles replaced. So, our fleet is definitely improving. The last, the last mile is to do something about the bus. So, we're in those conversations. We'll see what happens. Okay, I'm going to do a quick review of some marketing sales statistics. I know that for the last few months, Emily has come up and given her report and said, "We have 16 one-bedroom apartments. How are we going to sell our 16 one-bedroom apartments?" Well, we, we have a plan. We're working with a consultant who's helping us do that, but I want you to know how hard the marketing department is working on selling everything else. As of today, reserved, reserved, we're at 94%. David, does that sound right? And after the new coming, incoming, the incoming residents that are in process right now, we'll probably be closer to 96 or 97%. So, working really hard. In the month of January, we had 96 new leads. We had 184 connected calls, which means a call that someone made, that someone actually either picked up the phone or contacted them back to get information. From those calls, the team did 29 initial appointments, and from those 29, one resident moved in. Tours are something else that our team is focused on. I think I see Emily running up and down that hallway at least once a day, sometimes two tours a day. at least once a day, sometimes two tours a day. We had a total of, I'm adding in my head really quick, about 70 tours in the month of January. That's a lot of tours. In addition to the tours, not only did some come one time, some of them were returning for second tours. And I think typically Emily and I have said, if they come back three times, they're pretty much guaranteed, right? Remember searching for a retirement community? You tell your kids about it, you tell your friends about it. If you come back three times, we pretty much know. So in the month of January, 43% of our residents who came and toured did one tour, but 57% of those who came did at least two tours. So that's a great number as well. Two other quick statistics for you. One is new leads that lead to appointments, right? It's one thing to get a phone call and someone asks a ton of questions. It's a different thing to ask those questions and then actually say, "You know what? This really interests me. I'm going to show up for a tour." So for, overall, for the month of January, those initial leads led to, out of all of those leads, 67% of them came in to see the community and learn more, which is very positive and encouraging as well. And lastly, out of the new leads, on average, 5% of new leads that come into other communities, people who come in and tour and spend time with the marketing directors, typically 5% of those people move into the community. Here at Cedarfield for the month of January, wow, 11% did that. So that's pretty significant. And that's all because of the relationships that our marketing team have with prospects and even just people who are calling for information. Because sometimes that's all it is, is calling and people asking about what services that you offer or what other avenues they could explore for long-term care. So that, that department is doing a great job. And now with Maria on board, they're doing an even better job. So thank you. I will put this in the library so that you can refer to it as well. And now I will ask Ann Borgens to come up and join us. I think this is your last presentation. She went like this, and I'm going like this. Thank you so much for all you have done for me personally. It's been a great seven or eight months working together. But I know that she's sent a great deal for all of you as well and the council. So thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. It has been wonderful having you here. And yes, this is my last town hall meeting, but next month, you'll have Frank Miller standing up here. So he will do a great job for you as well. Thank you for all your support. This right now is a fairly busy time with the council. We're having a special meeting of Residents Council on Friday of this week in this room to review and I hope approve the proposed bylaws that have gone to, through all the area reps, to all the folks. So you should have had a meeting or an opportunity to comment on those. Then on the 28th of the month, we will have our association meeting. The association, the Cedarfield Residents Association, is all 520 of us who live at Cedarfield. Then the Residents Council is approximately 40 people who have been elected by you, the residents, to represent you in the association business. And so it's a good opportunity. So on the 28th of this month will be the Residents Association meeting. Obviously, we won't have a room where we will all be able to gather and vote in that meeting. We will be electing officers. The council itself will actually elect the chairs of the committees for next year. But we will have at least a viewing room set up, and you will get paper ballots ahead of time to vote on the bylaws and vote on officers for next year. So it's a good time. It's been a good run. And thanks to Amy, thanks to all of you and all the many volunteers. Any questions for me?
What time is the meeting on Friday?
Friday's meeting is at 2:00. Yes, thank you for confirming it's at 2:00 in this room. And we need the 40 voting members in this room. We also have the Prima Club Room set up as a viewing place. And Amanda said she would be in there. And we'll have my phone number and Mary Ann Bagley's phone number so if people have questions, they could call those in. Any other questions? Thank you, Amy.
Okay, we have three minutes before 4:00. One more question?
It's not a question.
Okay.
I just wanted to invite, I wanted to invite everybody who's interested in a big, wonderful Super Bowl party to come to the atrium at 5:30. We'll be having the regular fare that the atrium serves, as well as some other special foods. There would be beer and wine. And it's all Dutch treat, of course. But I think you'll have fun.